All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of the Board of Public Works. Everybody please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have seven items on tonight's agenda, the first item being the minutes from our last meeting on August 5th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Motion carries. Item number two, water utility rate review. Presentation by Ruth Miller.
Thank you and good evening. In 2017, the water utility contracted with Baker Tilly to perform a financial forecast to ensure that the water rates currently in place are adequate to meet current and future operating expenses and capital needs. The last rate increase for the water utility was in April of 2011. After we received the first draft of the report, we met with administration to review the information. It was requested at that time that we review our capital needs and make any necessary adjustments to the items that were included. Then, with the help of administration, a refinancing of debt was completed in early 2019. This refinancing resulted in a total savings of over $400,000 for the utility. The final draft of the forecast includes a decrease in the rate of return to 4.03%, which gets us to the final proposed increase of 9.5%.
The driving force behind the proposed increase is capital investment, both in infrastructure and infrastructure.
We have a commitment to keeping our infrastructure healthy in order to provide a safe and reliable water supply to the customers and citizens of the city of West Bend. The water system itself includes nine municipal wells with a combined 11 million gallon per day capacity, approximately 143 miles of various sized mains, three reservoirs, five water towers, and an air stripping facility. In recent years, water main replacement projects have included Green Valley Place, Sunset Drive, Evergreen Street, and 8th Avenue. Each of these replacements has come at a substantial price tag. 8th Avenue Phase 1 and 2 had a combined cost of over $800,000 for 33 feet of main replacement and lead lateral replacement. Also on the list slated for upgrade is well number 5 building reconstruction. The current facility is in need of upgrades for the pump room and for chemical treatment additions. This project has an estimated cost of $1.5 million. Upcoming infrastructure projects also include 7th Avenue and Bittersweet Drive. Water utility rates need to be approved by the Public Service Commission. This total process takes between six months and eight months to complete. At this time, we are requesting authorization to file the rate increase application with the Public Service Commission. In closing, I would like to thank Jay Chambeau for his assistance and guidance throughout this project. With that, I would like to present Jody Dobson of Baker Tilly to review the water utility financial forecast. After Jody's presentation, Jody, Water Utility Manager Travis Thall, and myself will be available to answer any questions that you may have. Jody?
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. As Ruth said, this is a process that's been going on for a little bit, and it's been a very thoughtful process by management, looking at what are the needs and what are all of the pieces of information that need to go into the financial forecast for the water utility. So we've looked at a lot of historical trends, as well as management's best information for what's needed in the future, and there have been a few versions of that in trying to refine that. But a couple highlights that I think Ruth touched on is that the rates were last changed for the water utility in 2011. So that's eight years. And if we look just at it, thinking of a 2% per year inflation on operating costs, that would be a 16% increase in costs. So, right there, it tells me that your management has been doing their absolute best to hold down the cost increase over this time. So as she mentioned, there's two key factors here in the rate increase that is being forecasted in this financial forecast. The first is the amount of time since the last increase, and just the fact that our operating costs have increased. And then the second is the ongoing capital improvements, and she highlighted a number of those. But there's an extensive capital plan out for the next six or seven years, looking at infrastructure that needs to be replaced. So, the one-page summary you have on the financial forecast shows the rate of return that was the actual for 2016 and 17 when this process was started, and then the forecasted rate of return for 2018 through 2022. We actually know that 2018 results were a little bit better than what was forecasted at this time, and so the actual rate of return for 2018 was 3.3%. But that said, it's been on a downward trend from 6.6% to 5% to now 3.3%. So the last time that the water rates were reviewed by the Public Service Commission, the benchmark rate of return that was set in that, or I'm sorry, not the benchmark, the authorized rate of return was 4.89%. And what that is really saying is that you should be earning enough in revenues to cover your operating costs and earn that return on your investment in infrastructure in order to be able to reinvest or make those replacements that are necessary in your capital plan and pay any debt service related to that. And so because you're earning less than that authorized rate of return, it means you're earning less on your investment than your rates were designed for, and allowing you less cash to then reinvest in your system. And so that's why the financial forecast is looking at rate increases here. So, what the financial forecast has been designed currently with is what would it take to get a 4% rate of return for 2020? And then going forward from that, we just said what would happen if you had just an inflationary 3% return, because the Public Service Commission has a simplified process for that, just to show what that would do as far as maintaining that rate of return. But as Ruth said, there's a full application process. So really what we're asking tonight is for authorization to complete that application to the Public Service Commission that would incorporate the updated 2018 actual results and 2019 year-to-date results in that process. And so it would be one more process of refining the numbers before there would be an actual adjustment to rates.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Craig?
I would have to go first if someone else is itching.
Oh, no. I'll go. Yeah, I have a question for both you and Ruth. There is, in the summary that you gave us, you talked about after the initial review, you were able to make the following changes to reduce the costs. On what basis did you do that? Because it appears that all of the things that you reduced were things that were needed.
I believe the majority of the items that were pushed back were water main projects. And actually, I'm going to defer to Travis as far as what capital projects were pushed out and the reasonings behind them.
Yeah, they were a majority of water main projects. They were projects that were scheduled probably about five years earlier than this year. We kept pushing them down the line. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking these water main projects that we intended to do about five years ago, and now we're out, we're going to be six, seven years out. One other thing we pushed out is a piece of equipment. One of the things that we have heard is a lot of the excavation is going to go to hydroexcavating. Basically, they're not threatening laws, but it's pushing towards that. Any kind of digging around, any kind of infrastructure, gas lines, packages from like duct work, stuff like that, it's going to require us to do hydroexcavating. But they haven't required that yet, so we pushed that out. So I would say majority of it is the water main projects replacement.
How much of the budget is dedicated to replacement of infrastructure that hasn't yet failed or doesn't jive with a convenient road project? In other words, at what point are we going to be able to replace all of our infrastructure? Because everything we've got is going to reach end of life at some point, and I suspect that much of it already has, and we're just kind of lucky.
That's a tough question. End of life. There's some water main out there that lasts a very long time. There's some water main out there that we'll talk about, like ductile water main, that wasn't built as good as the cast. Now we're talking plastic. That's going to, that's the new stuff we're putting in. What percentage? I think we just quick did some rough numbers, at about 45, 44% of our budget right now goes towards water main replacement. How much of that is actually happening? I would have to go, I would have to get back to you on that. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to budget for, that's what we're trying to forecast for, but actual might be just a hair lower than that. If that helps.
Yep. Travis or Ruth, with the rate increase, the 9.65, for an average household, can you give me the, just an estimate cost per household, what it would be?
Yes, John, it is on the handout that you have on the very bottom, the current rates for the average residential customer. If we do the 9.5% increase, the increase in their average water bill, now this is just for the water portion of their bill, would be $4.96.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, per quarter. I'm sorry, thank you.
Per quarter, great.
I do have a question on the, obviously, you need, you know, we're looking for sources of funding to manage all these replacements and things, and when I was looking at some of the supporting documentation, there was a line on operating income, where in 2016 it looks like we brought in just short of 1.6 million, and then in 2017, we budgeted 942, and 2018, we budgeted 761,000. Do you know, or do you know why the budgeted numbers and the forecasted numbers were, why they dropped so much? It's on the Schedule 1, just that top operating income line.
So that operating income is the result of the revenues less the expenses? So my first guess would be that there was some unusual expense in those years, but I'd have to go back to the detail to know that for sure.
Okay.
I don't know, is there maybe?
But what you're saying is it's, so it's a result of revenues minus expenses?
Yes.
So the expenses are going up, but the revenue has stayed steady with the rates and stuff that are coming in?
Right, because there's been no change in rates, so the only way that revenues change would be if you sell more water, and the water industry has seen pretty flat sales over the last several years.
Okay. All right, thank you, that helps.
Thanks, Andrew. Who authorizes the ROI? We're talking about authorized rate of return.
The Public Service Commission of Wisconsin.
Okay, so they say that the target is 4.89% or whatever that number is, or 4.03% or whatever it may be.
So the last time your rates were established, they set it at the 4.89%. Typically, what they do is they'll have a benchmark that's kind of just their, I'll say, neutral starting point for all municipalities. Lately, that's been around 5 or 5.5% and that's based off of geo-borrowing rates plus a 2-point adder. But what we are able to do is request for that, from them, a variance from that if we demonstrate that the utility would have enough cash reserves to meet its operating capital and debt service needs at a slightly lower rate.
Is that modified community by community, or is that, it's not just straight across the board statewide?
No, they, they'll start with the same point of discussion, but then they'll modify it from there.
What is, and maybe this is more of a philosophical question than, than you can or want to answer, what's the rationale for a rate of return when we're taking public money and expecting to make money on the money that we're taking from the public versus if we run into a jam and need infrastructure or have a problem with equipment or whatever, we can just go and ask the public or arguably take more money from the public? What's the rationale to have an actual rate of return on money that we're taking from the public in the first place?
So I think part of it is to be able to pay for those infrastructure or debt service. So, as I said, their benchmark comes from looking at borrowing rates. So if you were having to borrow to do all your capital projects, you're going to have an interest cost on that money. So that's one of the things they're looking at, is making sure that you're able to meet those debt service requirements and that you're not relying on the city or the tax-paying funds to subsidize the water utility. And then, obviously, if you're not using debt, then it's to have the cash flow to make that, those capital improvements.
Gotcha. And Ruth and Travis, I think you know this, I'm not sure how long you've served our great community, but I think if you go back, and this goes to Alderman Allen's quote a few minutes ago that I'll respectfully challenge, I don't think we've been lucky. I think we've shown over the years that our public utilities, sewer and water, are really a strength of the city. So I think if you, if I recall properly or correctly, if you go back to 15, 14, 13, 12, our ROI has been pretty phenomenal. Our debt service ratios have been pretty exceptional, I think is from what your peers have said in the past. So the reason we didn't have a rate increase was because we simply didn't need it. It wasn't because we were trying to push a project down the road. That being said, I support this rate increase, and I'd like to know, and Ruth, Travis, maybe you know off the top of your head, but I think it's important for the public to hear approximately what percentage, if you can, of the increase or of the additional projects actually would be classified as quote-unquote "roads" versus, you know, replacing a hydrant or a water main, not necessarily, but, you know, when we think of roads, a lot of the time we just think of the asphalt surface and the curbing, but really, when we do a road project, we're investing in the infrastructure under there, and I'm hopeful that a lot of this rate increase is going to allow us to be able to communicate to the constituents that this isn't just jacking your water rate, it's actually helping us improve more roads throughout the city.
Correct, and that statement is so true. Many times, they see the road and they don't realize the water and sewer that are underneath that are just so vitally important to the community. We did some quick math right after we all got here, and as Travis stated, about 45 to 50% of the rate increase is what would be going towards water mains out of the whole increase, so.
Good, so this truly is an extra couple of bucks in the road maintenance or road improvement piggy bank.
That is correct.
I'd say thanks for your persistence. I know this has been, at least internally here, a multi-year discussion. Appreciate you doing the math and counting the pennies, and this is certainly something that I can support for the rationale that was stated.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, the one comment here that the, the, reduce the rate of return to 4.03 from 4.89, is the reason we want, is that just to reduce the, the cost of the increase that we need to ask for, or?
The reason we did ask Baker Tilly to look at the lower rate of return was to minimize the impact on the customer base. So yes, the answer is to get the rate increase basically under 10%. That's why it was done.
I guess, I look at, you know, eight years of really cheap water and think, at some point, it gets more expensive quickly, or the money comes from somewhere else like property tax revenues.
The utilities themselves do not receive any property tax funds. So it's strictly water and sewer rates are what fund your water and sewer utilities.
Right. But if we had an emergency, where would, where would the city go to? I mean, ultimately, the city is responsible for that.
Yes, at that time, we'd need to determine where we could get the funds that they would, that would be needed.
I think we'd first go to our $1.7 million of unrestricted reserves in the water utility before we went anyplace else. That'd be my guess. Can, sorry, if you have more, I don't want to interrupt you.
No.
I think if we're having this discussion, it's important that, I think we do it right. It's been a long time coming. Can you, at what you're requesting, can you appropriately run the water department and appropriately plan for at least the near-term, three- to five-year future of the department?
Yes, with this increase, I do believe that we can.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Motion carries. Item number three, the sewer utility rate review. Ruth?
Just one moment. Thank you. I apologize. Again, it's going to sound like a broker record, but in 2017, we contracted with Baker Tilly to perform a rate study for the sewer utility. The sewer utility is required to complete a study every two years, as noted in the sewer use ordinance. And again, after the first draft of the report was received, we met with administration, reviewed the results. Again, it was requested that we review our capital requests, just to make sure that everything that we're requesting was truly indeed something that we foresee happening. As a result of the review, the timing of the two main interceptor projects that were included were reevaluated, and those projects were now slated for completion at a later date. The next draft of the study took into account the postponement of two additional projects. One is recoding of the trickling filters and two of the clarifiers. The final version of the adjustment to the rate increase adjusted the rate of return, and several options were provided for consideration. That brings us to the study that will be presented tonight to you. The driving force behind the proposed increase is in capital investment once again, in the plant and in the underground infrastructure. Investing in our infrastructure and our plant and the necessary operating expenditures to maintain all of these facilities is what is paramount to remaining a self-sustaining and productive enterprise fund of the city of West Bend, and allows us to continue to provide wastewater services to the customers of the utility. The wastewater treatment plant itself is approximately 1/3 of a mile long. The sanitary sewer collection system consists of 137 miles of underground pipes of various sizes and includes two lift stations. In recent years, we have installed new sanitary main extending to Rusko Road. We have replaced main on 18th Avenue, 8th Avenue, Sylvan Way, and Green Valley Place. Upcoming projects include 7th Avenue, Bittersweet Drive, and Edward Court. Each of these replacement, again, comes at a substantial cost. For the sewer utility, Phase 1 and Phase 2 of 8th Avenue carried a cost of over $570,000 for 3,200 feet of main replacement. By the end of 2019, we will have, we will have completed replacement of six of the eight clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost of $200,000 each. The digester mixing systems within the plant are also in need of replacement. There are three separate mixing systems with a replacement cost of $380,000. This again reiterates the vast cost of replacing aging equipment that is vital to the operations of the wastewater treatment plant. The rates for the sewer utility have not increased since 2006. I attribute that to the management team and staff in place at the utility since that time. They have continued to maintain an aging plant and underground infrastructure to extend the expected useful life of these items. They have also found other sources of revenue, from outside haulers to biogas generation. The detailed information and historical trends that are presented in the study are important to provide, so that all involved can remain informed and aware of current and future projects, and allow for more informed decision-making. We would propose that any approved rate increase be effective no later than January 1st, 2020. And to make a note here, the sewer utility is not governed by the Public Service Commission. Therefore, they do not need to apply to the Public Service Commission, and there would not be the six-to-eight-month waiting period. These rates could be implemented as soon as we got the okay from the Board of Public Works. I would again like to thank Jay for his assistance, assistance and guidance throughout this process. With that, I will again present Jody Dobson of Baker Tilly to review the sewer rate study, and after Jody's presentation, Jody, Sewer Utility Superintendent Steve Rendell, and myself will be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. So again, you have a one-page handout that summarizes the results of the sewer utilities rate study. And this, in this study, we were focusing on 2018 and 2019 information. So about in the middle of the page, we have kind of the summary here of the cash reserves history, because this is a key number for the sewer utility. So there's a DNR replacement account, which is a required account from the DNR that you must have, and set aside money related to the mechanical equipment involved in the treatment process. They have statutory requirements as to how much needs to go into that and what the money can be used for. The idea is really a forced savings, that if you need to replace some of that equipment or more importantly, repair breakdowns, that there are reserves available for that, so that there's not a delay. The second line is a designated projects fund. This is something that West Bend has created to set aside money for capital projects, understanding that there are very few projects within the wastewater utility that are small projects, as Ruth alluded to in some of the numbers she was quoting. And so being able to set aside funds over time to pay for those projects when they come due. And then the third line, we have the unrestricted cash reserves. And so, as we can see here, the total cash reserves has decreased a little bit, and if we had gone back further in time, it had been decreasing. And as we look at that unrestricted cash reserves in the first table here, if there's no change in rates, that will be drawn down to essentially zero in 2021, and then slowly built up. And when I look at the changes that go on in that timeframe there, there's two key changes from 2021 to 2022. Number one is a decrease in some of the capital projects in 2022, so there's less spending. And then also, starting in 2021 through, I believe, 2023, there's some repayments to the sewer utility from the tids of money that was previously advanced. So, a couple timing things there, but we do see that that unrestricted cash reserves, it's really drawn down from where it has historically been. So what we wanted to do then is see, again, starting with that 4% rate of return, similar to what the water utility would be earning on its investment in infrastructure, looking at that, what would the rate increase be? And then management asked us just to provide options, because again, these rates aren't regulated by the Public Service Commission, so you essentially get to establish where you want these rates set and that rate of return set in the design. And so that's what we have at the bottom of the page, is showing where the cash balances projected for 2019, based on this information, would have been under each of these three scenarios. And then, at the very bottom, the impact to the average residential customer of each of these three scenarios. So if the 4% rate of return was desired, it says it's a 20% increase on the sewer bill, which sounds like a lot, and that's why we always like to look at what are the real dollars? That would be just under $10 per quarter for the average resident. And then obviously, we have the 2% is just under $6 per quarter, and at the 0% rate of return, it's about an 3% increase, or just under $2 per quarter.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Mark? Yeah. Is there a reason we would want to go to the low end of, I mean, why would we want a 0% rate of return over a 4%? I mean, it already looks like we're, we're not having much of a cushion in here.
Yeah, I think the, in the interest of giving the board options to understand what the implications of this were, this was asked to be provided. But I think looking at the investment that you're placing into infrastructure and the need to continue to do that into the future, earning the 4% on that would allow you to maintain that unrestricted reserve in, in more of the area that it's historically been and have the resources to make those capital improvements.
At what point are we looking at replacing the entire plant? I mean, the plant was built in the 80s, early 80s, as I understand it, and had a 30-ish year life. We seem to be there. I know, I know we're replacing pieces of it all along or rebuilding them, but, you know, at some point, your Model T can't get another cylinder bore.
Correct, and that's some of the capital projects that are, that are there.
Correct, and that's some of the capital projects that are there. Mixing system, as Ruth had mentioned, for digesters, we're there with that. We've rebuilt them, utilized them as much as we can, so that's part of it. The one very nice thing about the plant is we're roughly at half-capacity, as far as how much wastewater we can take in. So what we're looking for in the capital improvement plan is to do major equipment replaces and upgrade it that way, rather than, you know, doing an entire plant replacement, large upgrade.
As I understand from the tour you gave me, several months back, your plant basically runs in parallel, and either half can pretty much handle the load, so what, you work on half of the plant at a time?
It does flow entirely through the plant, both sides. Being half-capacity theoretically, right, you could run on half the plant, but we utilize the entire thing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple questions. Probably Ruth, you know more about this than... Regarding the sewer utility, I remember just when I got on the council that, at one point, the sewer utility had, was it four or $14 million in reserves? And the city came to ask help for assistance with the police department addition, and I believe a TIF project. Has the city ever repaid the sewer utility back? Or Jay or Craig, can you answer that question for me?
The... For the police department, it wasn't a loan, so it's not anything to be paid back. But from the TIF perspective, I believe that's what was referenced in 2021 and 22, it targeted to start paying some of those dollars back.
If you look at page 53 of 202, and your document, it shows, under the first column, far right, 2021, 2022 repayment of advances. There's an 800 spikes to 829,000 projected in 2021, and then just over a million in 2022. So Jody covered that with her presentation, but that's part of the cash that's coming back to the utility.
Okay, so the utility will be having some cash coming back, because that with... Looking down the road, the 20%, you know, if we didn't have any other cash coming back, we need to make sure we have that sewer utility up to at least repairs done, so we can continue to run that sewer plant. All of a sudden, we come along and we sit there high and dry, and we don't have the money to fix the equipment, what are we going to do? So my proposal is that we go with the 2% ROR, which would mean that an average per quarter would be $5.73 or $6 per household. I think that we can swallow. Obviously, mine will be a little more than that, but I can swallow that. But the 20.59 is an awful lot to hit the people out, the residents out there, so that would be my proposal. I don't know what the rest of the committee thinks. But it's good to hear that at least we've got some money coming back to help make the difference.
Any other questions? Craig?
Can you hit me, tell me again what the DNR replacement is? You may have mentioned that, and I might have gone over my head, but it goes, you know, from half a million bucks in 2016, and has a 40% increase by the time you get to, you know, 2021.
So that's the DNR requires that, based on the amount of mechanical equipment you have in the system and at the treatment plant, so it's lift stations as well as to the treatment plant, that you're taking money and setting aside every year for ultimately the replacement and repairs on that equipment.
So it's a reserve account?
So it is a reserve account for that.
Just to try and get your blood pressure down, John, a little bit, that's what I thought it was, that we've got like reserves built in on top of the reserves. Designated projects, I'm not going to say their reserves, but those are known things that we are going to be fixing. Does that make sense, John? Okay, good. The 2018 estimated, did you get actual numbers on that, similar to the water?
Yes. So the unrestricted cash was about 4.5 million versus the 3.6 million.
25% higher than you thought.
Yeah, so it was higher.
And then will that likely then carry forward if we're a million dollars or so higher in 2018? That means 19, 20, 21, 22 are that same million dollars, unless we decide to spend that between now and then?
Right, unless there was a project that was intended to happen in 18 that's now happening in 19, that it was just timing, but otherwise it would.
You're going to need to increase your heart rate, John, because it's going to get so low here in a second. I'd like to jump back, if I could, just back to the water, just for a clarification, similar type question. We thought that our ROI was going to be about a percent and a half, and it actually came in more than double that, at 3.3. So that similarly would translate or project forward for 19, 20, 21, whatever those extra dollars that we got, were actual dollars versus what we projected in 18, would carry forward to future years as well?
Yes.
Unless we decide to spend them in the...
Unless expenses go up. And the other thing to remember when you're doing a ROR on your investment as capital is, every dollar you put in capital increases what you're trying to earn on, so if you're not adjusting your rates for that, then your percentage that you're actually going to earn will go down.
Sure, but there had been a couple of positive surprises that...
Yes.
I would hate for the public to get the impression that we're running down our reserves to zero. That might be our unrestricted reserve account, but there are multiple other accounts in play. Okay. If it... The 0% ROR versus the 2%. We budget in, obviously, the DNR replacement, we're budgeting in projects, we're budgeting in some unrestricted reserves. So what's the difference in actual cash from a 0% ROR to a 2% ROR? What... It can't be more than a couple hundred thousand dollars, my guess is.
So if you look right about the... Just a little below the middle of the page, there's a theoretical rate increase line. So at the 0% rate of return, it would be $107,000. The 2% rate of return would be $394,000. So that's the total additional revenue projected based on these estimates.
Right, so I guess the question for the committee here is, you know, it's like, whatever, a couple hundred grand, 200 and whatever that was, 80 or 90 thousand dollar difference or so. Do we need those dollars when we have other reserves built in? And if there's something catastrophic, something catastrophic happens, we do have the means for the sewer utility to go out and borrow money, and then pay it back through some future rate increase. So the question for us is, do we want to take an extra, whatever that math is, 16 bucks a year out of people when we may or may not need it, since we have other reserves already being built up? I would say I'd rather not. But it's up for the person who makes the motion whenever questions are answered. Did I explain that sort of correctly? All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So we're sitting here, we're looking at this, trying to decide if we're going to, you know, ask for $20 a year, or $40 a year, or $8 a year. But all that aside, I mean, we got here because we deferred some projects. Is that correct? We reevaluated the timing of interceptor mains, we postponed the rehab of the final two clarifiers that are still to be done. The recoding project, we put off a year at least, and we reduced the rate of return. The rate of return aside, by not doing these projects, what risk do we have that we will have a problem before they come around and get approved?
The interceptors are basically to allow the city to expand, put pipe in different locations to allow it to expand, so that's why that was removed at this time, didn't see it necessary. The recoding is pushing it back a year. It was already pushed back, I believe, three years. It was just deterioration from UV on fiberglass coating of a cover. So rather than have to worry about replacing the cover itself, if we can get it recoded... Those were the main ones. The clarifiers, they have been failing. As soon as they started failing, we started replacing them, and that's what allowed us to continue forward, so it's trying to guess when a mechanical piece of mechanical equipment is going to fail for the clarifiers.
Just one clarification question on the DNR replacement funds or account. Is that... I mean, is that open, that you can use it whenever, wherever, or do you have to apply, and it's a long process to get the money? Or like, I guess my question is, if you... If we're going to be replacing these things, you know, number one, is that money accessible to us to use to buy it, so we can, you know, so we can use it for what it's intended to be used for? And then how long do you have to replace that, to get back to that level, before the DNR starts to get angry that you don't have that funding there?
So yes, it's accessible. It's to be used for those mechanical items, so it can only be used for the pieces of equipment that are on that list. So you can't use that, say, to replace collection system mains. It does have those limitations. And then the way it's replenished is if you buy a $100,000 piece of equipment that has a 10-year life, you need to put aside $10,000 a year, so that hopefully, when that 10 years is up, the money would be sitting there. So it's a slow replenishment, which is why we see it growing, because as you've replaced some equipment, you've used that in the recent years, and now the new, more expensive equipment means we're putting more aside each year for the next time it's replaced.
So if it lasts longer than 10 years, you don't have to put any more in to cover that piece of equipment?
Right, right. But unfortunately, it doesn't always perfectly account for the inflation in equipment costs over time either.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Just one. What rate of inflation did you build into this model? I may have missed it, it's probably there.
We would have used what the PSC has as benchmark rates, which are, I'll say, roughly 2%. It varies from year to year a little bit, so it might be just below or just above 2%.
Okay. Any questions? Craig?
One more clarification. So the difference between in actual revenue, between a 0% ROR and a 2% ROR is $287,000, if I jotted this down correctly. So that doesn't... If I'm understanding correctly, it really doesn't make or break what our planned projects are. Our project list, our DNR replacement, our operational funding, all continues on, it's just a matter of what extra cash we're asking the people to give us now, which we may or may not need. Did I phrase that correctly? And I should have had a question at the end of it, not a statement I'm asking.
Right, so what that addition would go into is that unrestricted reserve, which is what you use basically to pay your day-to-day bills, because typically, your bills come due before your revenue stream comes in, as you're billing on a delayed basis. And so that's why you always want to have some unrestricted reserves. And so that's really where this is going to go, is into balancing that unrestricted reserve line.
And that's already a million dollars higher than we thought it was at the time of this printing, right?
Correct. Maybe one other thing to remember is that with the sewer rates, you do, based on DNR regulations, do some sort of a review on these, at least every two years, so...
I think you guys have been shining around 12 months, every 12 months or so, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, it typically is a little bit of a lengthy process, so yeah, it is something that you will get a chance to look at again in a short period of time.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we look for a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to go to project a rate increase at 2% ROR, 11.92% increase in rates.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number four, discussion of the 2020 to 2025 Wisconsin Surface Transportation Program. Presentation by Max Marshall.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, I come to you with a discussion item about the next Wisconsin Surface Transportation Program. Basically, it's a grant program that is an opportunity for communities to apply for and be able to complete some more expensive projects. It's a program we've used for Eighteenth Avenue, Phase One, that we built last year, and Phase Two, that we're in the process of designing or going to be designing soon. And with this new program, from 2020 to 2025, we have another opportunity to apply for those funds. And last time, we had a discussion in 2017, we had three projects that we were considering, the Eighteenth Avenue that I mentioned, which is taken care of at this point. Seventh Avenue project, which because of ADA federal requirement would have been a challenge, and at this time, the city is considering other means of funding for this project. And the South Main Street, which is a long project from Humar Street to Rusko Drive, and couldn't fit in the program because of the limitation of the available funds. But at this time, when we're looking at the next cycle, we could kind of slice up that Main Street project and do a section of it. If the board and council would like us to prepare an application for that section of Main Street between Humar and Progress Drive, we would do that. The deadline for the application is October 15. The reason why I come to you prior to applying is because if we do get the grant to do the project, there will be a contribution from the city, we hope 20%, but it could be up to 50% of the cost. And so the section that we were looking at, the total cost would be about $2.8 million, and that's what we would send to DOT, and hopefully, if the application would be successful, we would be funding... The federal government would be funding this project at least 50%, hopefully up to 80%. So basically, I'm looking for direction from the board and council on, would you like us to submit the application and try to get the funding for this project?
All right, thanks, Max. Any questions?
Yes, you talked about that. If recollection serves, Humar to Progress is... I mean, that's basically the old Bob Fish. That's like a long block, if that... That's $1.8 million?
The project cost estimate that we had was about $2.8 million for the reconstruction of the road, acquiring for land acquisition needs, and anything else needed for the project, yes.
It's all the way to Rusko, not just to Progress Drive?
No, well...
Are we talking two different things?
I thought we were talking about the...
Progress.
The subset.
Sorry?
And I mean, it's quite literally, well, it's a block and a half. It's... Seems like... Seems like a lot of money for a block and a half.
That's what the numbers come out as.
Okay.
I guess.
Is there another block and a half or two-block project that makes more sense? Or are we too far out to... Request, I'm thinking the piece of Paradise Drive we just unbid.
Yes, so we are limited in the roads that qualify for this kind of funding. So we can take another look at the map and see if there are other section of roads that could be funding under this program. In order to be... In order to apply for this funding, the road has to be either an arterial, a minor arterial, or a collector street. And it's not necessarily within the city's definition of arterial or collector, it falls under the DOT definition. So they have a map with the color-coded streets, and we are limited to the amount of streets that we could apply for this funding for.
Okay.
Max, one, or one or two questions maybe. The, what you're asking for right now is just permission to apply for this, right? This isn't like 100% agreement, like, yes, we're going to go forward with it.
No.
If they come back and give us 50%, and we're like, ah, we'd really like to have 70, we can still say yes or no after?
Absolutely. It's just, it's just applying for the funding. If the, if the application is successful, then the state will come back and say, we're willing to grant you X amount of dollars to do this project, and therefore funding the project at 50%, 60%, 80%. And at that point, the city can decide to go forward or not. Through the process, once the city decides to go forward, there's a state municipal agreement that needs to be put in place. So there is quite a bit of time between today and actually when that agreement would be in place. And in the meantime, the city has the option to, to change its mind and decide, I'm not doing this project at this time.
And would we go through the same quoting process that we did, that, you know, that a group of us sat down for?
Yes, we would have to, we would have to, to do the same process with the selection of a design consultant, et cetera, yes.
So this is just like the first toll gate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
So, that being said, there's not any risk to us applying for the, the funding?
No.
Okay. Is there a reason we shouldn't then?
Not that I can think of right now.
We could have led with that.
I move that we give Max the go-ahead to apply for a grant. The only proviso I would put on that would be that we make sure that we're asking for the right two blocks, or four blocks, or six blocks of road.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Max. Item number five, accept improvements in Creekside Subdivision, addition number four. Max?
Thank you again. So we received a request from the developer of Creekside Subdivision, addition number four, and you have a map in your memo to indicate the location of that subdivision. And the developer requested to accept the remaining public improvements in that subdivision within Edgewater Drive, Ridge Drive, Arbor Vista Drive, and Arbor Vista Place. And those improvements are curb and gutter, the surface course of asphalt, and the street signs. So this is a typical acceptance of improvements that we do when a private entity build public improvements that are to become city-owned. And if the board and council concur to accept those improvements, we will have a one-year warranty period starting today, and that will expire at midnight on September 23, 2020. We would recommend approval, acceptance of those improvements.
Thanks, Max. Any questions for Max?
Yes. Is, there's no cost to the city. This just becomes part of our infrastructure.
That is correct.
Takes the maintenance burden off of the contractor who has it now.
Yes.
Do we own the pieces that, of Creekside that connect to this, that, north, south, and east and west sides?
Yes, those were all accepted as those previous subdivisions developed. The roads, you're talking about the roads connecting to those?
Yes.
Yes, they're all owned by the city and maintained by the city.
Any other questions, Max? I entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Creekside, number four.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Motion carries. Item number six, approval of grant of privilege agreements. Max?
Thank you again. Tonight I have several grant of privileges that I submit to your approval. So I grouped them under the same memo. And so we have some of them, I believe five of them, along Eighth Avenue. During the reconstruction of Eighth Avenue, existing carriage walks along the road were removed, and property owners who want to reinstall them have asked council to grant them the privilege to reconstruct those. And then we have one property on Pine Drive, who's asking also for a grant of privilege to have a carriage walk within the right-of-way between their property and the curb line along the street. And finally, we have another grant of privilege on Paradise Drive, where the property owner requested to be able to install a two-inch diameter sump, sump line to drain their sump pump and their roof drain, and to connect to a catch basin. This is a little particular because we usually would allow just a simple lateral to connect to the catch basin. However, the catch basin is not in front of the property. It is away from the property, so they need to run the pipe in the right-of-way to reach that catch basin. That's why we have this grant of privilege for, for this property. These grant of privileges are all, all the regular language that council has seen before. They have been reviewed by our city attorney, and we would recommend that the board and council approve those grant of privileges.
Thank you, Max. Any questions for Max?
Yeah. Max, the, one of the grant of privileges came in, it looks like it got grouped with the, the Eighth Avenue. It's the St. James Episcopal. They have a situation where existing steps on Walnut Street, they're, they're wanting to put handrails on existing steps. Now, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what, what do you mean by a street opening permit? Because that's what, that's what they're assessed with here, that none of the other people are. And they already have an existing carriageway. They're just asking to put a hand railing on one side of it.
Yes. So even if there is a slight modification to an existing structure in the right-of-way, because that structure was not documented in our database in the past, we always have to, or we always go through the permitting process. Many times, we just waive the fee, but we want the permit to be there so that we have something that is linked to the property and from our database, we can go back. If that person comes back in two years, 10 years, or anybody comes back, we would be able to find, through that permit, the grant of privilege, we would be able to document from the property for the future that this structure is rightfully within the right-of-way. So that's the purpose of having the, the permit.
And there's a reason they didn't get, is it, is it because it's not on their Eighth, Eighth Avenue side, it's on Walnut? That's the reason they're paying the $250?
The properties on Eighth Avenue where the road was reconstructed, for those, we, we give them a sidewalk permit. And so it's coming from engineering. The street opening permit is coming from the Department of Public Works. But what they're constructing is not just a carriage walk, which we tend to consider similar to a sidewalk. Usually, it's a flat piece of concrete. Here, the structure is different. Somebody could ask for a grant of privilege for a sprinkler system because they want their, their lawn between the sidewalk and the curb to be watered properly or more efficiently. And for those, we would have a street opening permit. So we do the sidewalk permit for pure carriage walks, and for any other improvement, we use the street opening permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Motion carries. Item number seven, approval of stormwater management practices, construction, and maintenance agreement in permanent municipal stormwater easement at First Baptist Church. Max?
Thank you again. So the document that we are asking for approval from the board and council is a stormwater management agreement between the city and the First Baptist Church. Basically, the church is proposing to add some buildings on their property and do some grading and adjustment to stormwater facilities. They did have an approved permit from a prior development years ago. So we did an amendment to that stormwater management permit. And with that amendment comes this agreement, which is typical when we grant a stormwater management permit since we became an MS4 community. It's an agreement that ensures that the property owner will maintain the improvement, the proposed improvement, so they keep functioning as intended in the future. So this is a typical agreement that you have seen before in the case of stormwater management permits. It does include some specificities due to, due to the particularities of the project for the church. For example, they have to extend a covert on the main street. They have to regrade the pond that they had built prior. And so we would recommend approval of the, of the maintenance agreement between the city and the church.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
And with no further business before the board plug works, I adjourn.
Thanks, Andrew. Like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for September 23, 2019, to order and recognize that we do have a quorum tonight. Item number one is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of the licensing board dating back to September 9, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item two is an original Class B combination liquor license for the Historic West Bend Theater Incorporated, Historic West Bend Theater, Inc., 125 North Main Street.
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item three is an original Class B beer license for Covert Operations Incorporated, Billy Sims Barbecue, located at 1442 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item four is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for Trinity Lutheran Church for the Camp Hometown Heroes Reunite Benefit being held on October 6, 2019, from 12 noon through 6 o'clock PM, inside Trinity Lutheran Church at 140 North, Seventh Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is approval of operators' licenses with the list that was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number six is operator's license for Mariah Dunkle, and we have a presentation tonight by Chief of Police Ken Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. The Police Department recommends denial of this license based upon two investigations and convictions. The first one, the most serious, September of 2015. Ms. Dunkle was involved in an investigation into drug trafficking and drug dealing in Washington County. She was originally charged with a number of charges, including possession of marijuana, possession with intent to deliver, and maintaining a drug trafficking place. As part of a plea deal, she was only found guilty of possession, and the possession with intent and maintaining drug trafficking was dropped. But it's pretty clear from the investigation that she was involved with individuals that were in fact dealing. In February of 2016, Ms. Dunkle was convicted, West Bend arrest, for possession of marijuana and possession of a prescription drug without a valid prescription. For those convictions, we recommend denial of her license.
Thanks, Chief. Is Ms. Dunkle here this evening? Good evening. If you just let us know your name and address, that'd be great.
Mariah Dunkle, and address is 704 South Indiana Ave, Apartment 3.
You got a chance to tell us why we should consider your thoughts over our police chief.
Well, these, these charges happened a few years back. I mean, I haven't been in any trouble since then. I'm just trying to work at the gas station, and I've had my liquor license before. I think they expire like every year, so I had to get a new one, and this is the first time I've ever been denied for it.
Was your other liquor license here in the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions that you may have? Licensing board? Anything else you'd like to say on your behalf?
I mean, other than no, I mean, I don't, I haven't gotten in trouble since those times, so I don't feel like me getting a liquor license is a threat to anybody.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion on the item.
Motion denied.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. The common council actually makes the decision. That meeting's coming up next, so if you want to hang out for a few minutes, this is a recommendation to the common council.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Be no further business before the licensing board. I adjourn. I'll welcome the rest of the common council up.
Mark, could you retry it? Are you in?
Yeah, he, he's in.
She said it. She said it. She's in. He goes. So, that's it. Good. 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 And good evening again, everyone. Thanks for your patience. Like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, September 23, 2019, to order and recognize that all eight aldermen are here this evening. Item number one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting from September 9.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Like to pull out items two and three from the consent agenda. We can discuss those independently, and take items four through 11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is water utility rate review. Thought any other members of the common council didn't have a chance to ask questions? If anyone is interested, you certainly have a chance. I think the rest of the staff is still here.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious. I guess, I guess, Ruth, why don't we do smaller rate increases more often?
Um...
Is that just based on what the council's recommendations, I suppose?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that would be why.
Gotcha.
Historically, our ROIs, and Ruth, and Travis, and the rest of the team can probably confirm these numbers exactly, but historically, our ROIs were, call them substantial, right? I mean, we weren't, at least the recommendations from, from auditors was that we were pretty financially strong, and there wasn't a need. So I think it's come time that costs are catching up. I think some of the, the water utility usage revenue is decreasing a bit, so I think it's time. There wasn't any kicking the can down the road. I don't think anyone was afraid to have the discussion. It just, in the council's past opinions, it wasn't needed, and we're in a different place in time now.
Seems like we could try to stay ahead of that, I suppose. Great.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Ruth.
Anybody else? I would entertain a motion on that item.
Motion to approve.
Second. And that's approving the recommendation from the...
From the Department of Public Works.
Perfect. A motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number three, same discussion. If anybody has a question regarding sewer, I believe the, the approval was increased to equal a 2% ROR. I believe the approval was increased to equal a 2% ROR. Any comments or questions? I want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ruth. Jumping ahead to item number 12, public hearing for resolution to vacate and discontinue all of Riverbend Drive and a portion of River Shores Drive in the River Shores Development. Jim Renke, are you making a presentation?
I will make a presentation tonight.
Evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, this is a public hearing that was established by the Common Council back on August 5th. They acknowledged and approved a preliminary resolution to vacate a portion of the Riverbend Drive, or I should say, the remaining portion of Riverbend Drive and a portion of River Shores Drive in the River Shores Development. As a part of that, a Class 3 public notice was sent to the paper and published. And then also, all property owners adjacent to the right-of-way that's being vacated or proposed to be vacated were notified. Staff has not received any comments or concerns or objections to the vacation as part of the process. And staff would recommend that the council approve the resolution vacating this portion of right-of-way. The intent of the vacation is to help with the redevelopment of the River Shores Development area.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item, feel free to step up right now. Form a line behind Jim. I want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Item number 13 is a resolution to vacate Riverbend Drive and a portion of River Shores Drive in the River Shores Development, TIF 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number 14 is a resolution approving the extraterritorial final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision. And again, a presentation by Jim.
Thank you. The resolution presented to the council tonight is for an extraterritorial final plat. The city has jurisdiction three miles out of our city corporate limits on land divisions out in the townships. The Platte Commission recommended approval of the 26-lot subdivision. And we're asking council tonight to endorse that approval. Adequate right-of-ways being provided for both Paradise Drive and Maple Road in accordance with our official maps. So, staff would recommend approval of this final plat.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
Motion approved.
Oops, sorry.
Quick question, procedurally. The three miles extraterritorial right of refusal or approval that we do, that's so that we can see if there's an impact from that development to us? Is that the whole idea behind that?
Correct. What it is, it allows the city to comment and approve on land divisions so that we can acquire or we can make sure we have appropriate right-of-way for road expansions. And also, look at the development patterns that the developers are proposing out in the townships that may come into the city at some point in time in the future.
Are there any reciprocal approval? In other words, if we do something, do cities and townships and villages adjacent to us but within three miles get first right of refusal?
No, it's, the state statutes allow the cities to do that with the townships. It's not done with the villages. And the townships do not have the, unless there's a boundary agreement, the right to review our proposals then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I think we had a motion on the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 15 is operators license for Mariah Dunkle. And I think as you saw, Ms. Dunkle is here this evening. Answer any questions if you have them. Chris?
Just to clarify, it looked like there was some confusion. Mariah stated she did have an operator's license before she was renewing. Is that the case?
They expire every two years.
So, she did have one before, correct. And there's been no violations that we're aware of within the last two years.
I don't know if it was, I don't know when it expired.
Well, it would have expired now or around now, right? That's why she's re-upping?
Well, it could have expired two years ago and now she's just applying now. I don't know what timeframe it was that she had the license.
It could have been granted prior to one or both of the offenses or the convictions.
Got it. So, we don't have record of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I guess I would be more comfortable, yes, she has a past record. But if it's just these past two years and she's been clean and showing that she's been able to handle that license, I'd feel more comfortable approving it. So, I guess I wish I had that information.
How about we ask the...
Mariah? Could you clarify?
Yeah, so, I can't remember the year either when I had it. I want to say it was in 2016 and 2017. I worked at the Jiffy Stop. And those charges happened in 2015. And I didn't get sentenced until 2016. And I haven't had any criminal records since then.
And was that for the same employer or were you working somewhere else at the time?
It was a different gas station.
Okay.
But I, obviously, I work at another new gas station and I need a liquor license to, you know, pretty much work by myself.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If it makes a difference to the council, can we dig into that? Because I think it's important, an important clarification, Chris. If we've got a track record of someone, especially in an industry that's having a challenging time finding employees...
I can definitely look up what year she had operators license issued for. I mean, I have a record of that in my office.
If that makes a difference in...
It wasn't within the last couple of years, though, that I can guarantee it.
Can we table this item and bring it back for a discussion again? If that's the council's pleasure, I guess I'd like to find out that answer.
I'd move to table for consideration after these questions are answered.
Yep.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Justice, seconded.
No.
You made the...
Oh, I seconded, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Mariah, if you could hang out maybe till after the meeting and talk with Stephanie about what you think kind of some of those dates might be, just to make sure that we're not getting any wires crossed here.
I have, I'm in files.
You do? Okay, skip that. Then you can safely leave unless you'd like to hang out tonight. You're welcome to do that, too. We're going to bring it back in two weeks and make a decision.
And did you have a recent name change?
No.
Okay.
It'll be the first Monday...
Within the last two years?
No.
Okay.
First Monday in October, so like three weeks from now, right?
Yep.
Two weeks?
I guess it's two weeks.
All right, we're even. We're even. Rich was the name. And Steve. Ready to move on? Item 16 is an ordinance repealing and recreating Chapter 12 of the Municipal Code entitled "Licenses and Permits." Stephanie, are you leading us through that? Yes, good.
Yes, I am. It's been a busy night. Chapter 12 has been updated to reflect current practices, delete outdated language, includes updates of recent legislative changes, removes the fees from Chapter 12 and creates a fee schedule, includes applications and licenses for a beer or wine walk and the extension of premise, which we never had before, develops also a policy that the city clerk can issue a picnic license, also call a temporary Class B license upon approval by the police department. However, if the police department recommends a denial, we would have to bring that then in front of the Common Council. My recommendation would be to adopt the revisions to Chapter 12 as this would make the process more consistent and easier for applicants.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions for Stephanie?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. An associated item is item 17, a fee schedule for Chapter 12, Section 12.35 entitled "Fees."
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of the Schmidt property in a presentation by City Administrator Jay Schenbo.
This property's been in the works for some time. The Schmidt property is part of prospective TIF number 14. The purchase of the property is in advance of the TIF being created. So, we are looking for an advancement from the general fund balance. That's the resolution that's before you. The repayment of that would be through the sale of prospective properties once the TIF is created and we have the park laid out and the industrial park rolling and having some success and sales coming in, then we would be able to repay the general fund from the sale of those lots.
Yep. Obviously, the city's got the ability to absorb that in the time being.
We have the available funds, yes. And so, the question, I'll just prospectively answer the question of what does this do to our fund balance and potential new ratings as we go out for bonding for the creation of the TIF or for our 2020 projects that we need for our CIP? And the advice from Phil Kassen is that we'll have the funds that we have now minus the 771,000, but we'll have an asset that's replacing that. So, we'll be able to relay that to the rating agency that we have this land as an asset on the books. And it reflects the 64.25 acres that we are looking to purchase from the Schmitz.
Fair fire, Wayne.
Just want to note that the Section 1 is just noting that this is under your fund balance ordinance. So, it falls within that, above the minimum threshold but below the maximum threshold, which is why, a large part of why this is necessary.
And it takes a two-thirds majority vote.
Correct. It's a two-thirds majority vote of the entire Common Council.
I would also add that from a financial standpoint, I think it's a benefit that we're using the cash versus actually waiting for the TIF to put this forward. A, the timing doesn't work out, but even if it did, we'd be borrowing money to buy this property when we have the cash sitting there. Really, like you said, Jay, we're exchanging one asset for, one asset being cash, for another asset being 66 acres of property. So, I think it's exciting. It's been a long time coming and the next step in the newest industrial park. Any other questions or comments? Oh, I should say, I think we've got about $6 million-ish in our fund balance currently. Maybe a little north of that.
Yeah, yes, right around there.
Right around there, close.
I would say we're looking to close. This is the other thing you might want to know is when we close on this land and Ian's working with the...
It's going to be about two weeks.
Title folks, either the 4th or the 7th of October.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Congratulations, City of West Bend. Item number 19 is a resolution for an urban forestry grant. Jay?
You've seen this the last couple of years. If you need to refresh, it's for the EAB program that the DNR puts out there. We, because we've been successful two years in a row, we're taking a chance as to applying. Again, you're always taking a chance when you apply for a grant. But you score more points for not having received the funds in the past. So far, our case has been very compelling the last two years when we applied. And we expect Cindy to write a similar compelling argument before the DNR. But just so you know, those $25,000 are funds that we would match through the 2020 CIP program that we've also matched the last couple of years that we've been successful. So, you've, by authorizing this in the past, you've already received $50,000 from the DNR that went towards the EAB program in West Bend.
Thanks, Jay. Questions for Jay? And when you say taking a chance, you're just, you don't really mean it like that.
Like, if we don't get it, we don't get it.
We just don't get it right. Okay, gotcha.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number 20, West Bend Theater Road Improvements. Max, Jay, are we getting a presentation from either one of you?
I can introduce, and we do have some theater folks in attendance as well if they're looking to present the brief memo that you have included in your packet. And my apologies for the amendment of this to the agenda in the 11th hour. It was because in working with Nick Novacek, the president of the Historic West Bend Theater, they are still hopeful to complete this work yet this year. And they just received it late last week. So, that's why the agenda got amended for it. So, he's looking for the city to cover the costs and construct North Main Street Drive, the design that's also included in your packet. And then, I'll just say, and Max is here to speak to the design if there are questions regarding the specifics of that. And then, the very last page of the 353-page agenda packet is the spreadsheet that reflects the $34,000. And I just asked Stephanie to, so if you didn't see that until tonight, that's because it just got added to your agenda packet as well.
Thanks, Jay. Guys, if you have a presentation you'd like to make, feel free to step up. Love to hear about what's cooking.
Thanks, John Torinis. I'm a director on the board of the Historic West Bend Theater, Inc. It's a nonprofit corporation. And with me is Jeff Potts, our new executive director, who is, by the way, just moving to West Bend. When are you moving in?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, with his wife, who is the director of marketing and communications for MPTC, so, which has, you know, campus in West Bend. I just wanted to make a couple bullet points. I know how to be concise. I'm a editorial writer. There's a lot of ways to look at this theater project. But, and it's going to be a lot of fun, for one. But I look at it as economic development. And I've been involved in economic development, economic development in this town for a long, long time. It's, this downtown redevelopment has been going in earnest for about 50 years. Started back in the late 60s and early 70s. And I look at this as the capstone for that 50 years of hard work by lots and lots of people. As all you know, our downtown is coming alive. And I think this project is going to be the punctuation point. We've got MOA for the 2D art. We've got a 3D sculpture collection. We've got the River Walk. The river is becoming absolutely beautiful. Now, you've got the River Walk project that you guys are doing. And so, I think West Bend's becoming a destination for the, for culture and arts and enjoyment of the river and all the amenities in downtown. So, this will be another amenity. Incidentally, the project is going very well. We've raised, we got to raise about $4 million. The number crept up a bit, as it always does when you're doing projects, especially when they're restoration projects. But we're about half done with the restoration now. The scaffolding went up last week. So, they'll be, they'll be in there restoring all that artwork we discovered. It's almost like an archaeological dig. It was covered with purple paint. And we're going to, it's been painted over with white and we'll be putting the stencils over the white. Chuck Dwyer, who's a prominent artist in this town, is going to be up there like Michelangelo on his back on doing the stencils on the ceiling. So, we're about half done. We'd like to be open in February. There's a couple of economic development points. We're in a very, very, very tight labor market. And not only do companies compete for labor, and obviously, they're competing with other organizations too, like the city. And in a sense, though, communities compete for labor. You've got to be able to bring in young talent like Jeff. And so, that, and that attraction competition revolves around a couple of things. Number one, when I'm hiring somebody, the quality of the schools. The second thing is availability of housing. But the third one is always quality of life. People want to live in a nice town. And the towns are sort of, people don't move to town for a Walmart. Usually, the defining characteristic of a city is its downtown and its cultural amenities. So, we are adding one big, beautiful piece of amenity to this town. And so, when we go to recruit, it's a big help that we have an extraordinarily attractive downtown on a very attractive river. So, it's a matter of bringing in talent. And you can't do it if you've got a town that's no fun. So, the last thing I would like to say is that we've raised $2.3 million in this town in donations from probably over 150 donors in this town. We relit the theater after 90 years, 90 years after it was first lit. And we had over 500 people downtown pouring, supporting us. More than 70 people donated. We raised about $12,000 in donations from $100 up to $500. So clearly, this town is really, really behind this project. So we raised 2.3 million so far from donors in the community. We've raised another one and a half million net from the state and federal government. So we're now asking the city to fund 34,000 for this realignment of the curb line in front of the building. It does two things. It'll be a drop-off zone for people coming to the theater in whatever way, buses for senior citizens, as an example. And secondly, it'll skirt the edge of our marquee that we're putting 200,000 bucks into. It, marquee sort of hung over the street before, and every time a steak truck would come through, it would damage the marquee. Well, we don't want to damage a brand-new 200,000 marquee. So it's going to do a lot of good things for the downtown. We expect to be, finally, we expect to be a major asset when in 2021 you guys embark on the West Riverbank renovation. We want to participate fully in that and be a really nice amenity for that, that whole project. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Anybody have any questions? Unless I've got a comment or two, Justice?
Yeah, first of all, I love what you guys are doing down there, and welcome to West Bend. And I agree with your philosophy 100% as far as quality of life. I guess, maybe this is a Max question, and I'm sure I'm going to ask this wrong, but has there been, in the design of this piece of road, has there been any consideration, and I'm sure there has, but what consideration's been given to the future redevelopment of the road in downtown? Are there standards that we can just adhere to now and then kind of work everything together with the future plans? Because I know we don't know exactly what we're doing down there yet with the redevelopment of the road, so...
No, I would start by saying that we have reviewed the design plans. We sent out our comments on Friday, and so they were going to need to have some revisions to some of the items. So we don't have the final design plans yet, although I believe what we have is fairly close. As far as the bigger picture, there was no consideration given to the future configuration of Main Street. This is a very small area that's being modified right now, and so we're making it work within what we have in that area in front of the theater property. And so I believe when the Main Street is reconfigured, redesigned, it will be a much bigger picture, and so it will not be dependent on this modification that we're doing today.
Okay, we're not worried about it?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Max.
Any other questions? Unless I've got a couple for Max. Do you have one, John? Go ahead.
Yeah. I agree with Justice. That theater is going to be just a huge success in the city. We need that. We really do. We go to the Char Center in Hartford. We want to go to West Bend Theater, and I'm really happy to see that happen. And with the handicap, and I'm sure there are going to be a lot of people coming downtown, and if we need to take care of this minor center part there in order to draw people downtown, it's going to help the restaurants down there, it's going to help all the people down there. We've got a beautiful Riverwalk. I agree. I think 34,000 is just a drop in a bucket if we can continue to improve our downtown. Kudos to all the work you've guys done to it.
Thanks, John. Rich?
Craig, as I was thinking about this, and as John was talking, one of the key things, I think, that John mentioned is this will bring people to downtown, not only the people that are living here, but others. It might be a key centerpiece to the whole tourism piece that we have here. And I'm wondering if we should hand this, you know, to the Tourism Committee and get funding through there? Just opening up that as a question.
We're thinking kind of along the same lines. John and Jeff, welcome to West Bend. I agree with the council here so far that if you're out there raising 2.3 so far, up to four million dollars, that 34,000 bucks seems like a fair ask. Pulling it from pavement maintenance might seem like a fair ask to everyone here, with the exception of maybe Max, who we're trying to have him fix as many potholes with 34 grand. I've got a couple of questions for you, Max, that might align with what Rich is thinking and just... The $34,000 estimate, was that assuming a public bid?
Actually, I've seen the estimate very recently, on Friday, so I don't know all the assumptions that were made in there. I, so I don't know if whoever put it together considered a public bid. I did talk with Jay about the timing of the public bid, because if it is over $25,000, we have to go through a certain process, and that will put us to construction when there will be snow on the ground, at least I assume. And so if it was for the city to actually put this out to bid and actually build it, I would think that we would bid it early January and then construct it in the spring. If we had to go through this process, I believe going through the private process, not having the same hoops to jump through, they might be able to accelerate the process and get it built this year yet, if that's the case, if that's the goal. So that's my take on that. As far as the cost, I didn't, some of the unit prices seem a little higher than what we see sometimes, but there were some elements that were missing in the bid, in the estimate, so I figured all in all, it probably balances and comes out to that amount. I didn't do a detailed study of it.
No, no, I understand. And I asked maybe a loaded question for a reason. Let me ask a couple more. Jay, what is it, I presume that the Tourism Committee, we've got, you're the chairman, and I think we've got Rich and Andrew on there. If the council requested the Tourism Committee, and I'm just going to say 35 grand just for round numbers sake, to donate that money to the Historic Theater, is that illegal? I think that's what the money is, that's what the fund is there for, right? Rather than taking it from pavement maintenance?
Yeah, John and I have actually had that conversation already about the possibility of the Historic Theater receiving some funds, so I don't think that's a foreign ask of the Tourism Commission funds. We, on an annual basis, receive about 385,000 from the tourism hotel tax and have about 75,000 in a fund balance that could be earmarked for something like this.
I think you may be able to make 35 grand go further than the city could through a public bidding process.
Yeah, a couple of points, smaller points I didn't mention. We have an offer from Schmitz Concrete to provide some of the concrete now, the spec, and also, we paid for the initial sketches of the property, and I think we've volunteered to pay for the engineering as well. So we're already got two feet into it. So that would probably cut that cost on some. Now, there was a note in there, and I don't know where it came from, that the concrete had to be colored concrete, and Schmitz doesn't do colored concrete, so we need to work that out. Part of it is colored, part not colored. So we can knock that number down a little bit with some donations, more donations from private sector.
Max, and don't go too far, John.
I'm sure we can manage the project with Max's oversight, because, you know, we've got MSI General, which is an engineering company.
That's what I mean, really, I'm getting that. Max, can they do work in the right of way, just with the proper, could MSI or the theater, MSI on behalf of the theater do that construction work, assuming the Tourism Committee donates some dollars?
I believe so. This is a process we've used several, several times in the past for other projects, like the Meyer project, they had to widen Main Street. We know that Fleet Farm is doing work in the right of way, Honda is doing work in the right of way. They get the proper permits from us, and that's where we have those plans that we're reviewing. It's to grant that permit so they can do this work in the road right of way, in accordance with plans that we approved.
But, again, depending on, go ahead, Mark.
Why would this be any different than a grant of privilege? In other words, what you're asking for in a grant of privilege to put in a sidewalk is the right to do something on city property.
I think, yeah, Max is saying that...
The grant of privilege, though, is for the privilege to have a privately owned structure in the right of way, because that piece of sidewalk, that, those stairs and all that are all privately owned and maintained by the property owner. What we're talking about here is public improvements. For example, on Continental Drive, there was a median opening that was created, there was a continuous median, and because of a business coming in with a driveway, we created an opening there. So they had to do the work in the right of way, but all these improvements are and remain city-owned versus the grant of privilege where it's privately owned. That's the difference.
So I think we're saying the work can get done.
Yes.
John, does it scare you and your organization at all if the Tourism Committee said, instead of, here's a new curb, here's some money, go put it, the new curb in?
I put myself through college digging sewers and putting in water lines. Doesn't scare me. I might add that, you know, the tourism fund will get paid back when we get the new hotel downtown.
That's kind of the logic behind it.
And we're going to be helping to fill up those hotels, so the tax, the hotel taxes should be going north, not south.
So Jay, Rich, and Andrews, it seemed reasonable to take this, and then at the same time, council, we're not getting our hands slapped by the folks that want us to use the pavement maintenance to fix potholes. We're still getting the work done, and we're allowed, or we're still allowing pavement maintenance to keep their full allotment of dollars.
We're due to have a Tourism Commission meeting, so it's prudent to schedule one as soon as practicable.
Communicate with John and Jeff, and if it makes sense to the council? It might be a win-win-win? Okay. And congratulations, John and Jeff, awesome stuff, and keep up the good work. Congratulations on ripping it apart. Okay, so no action there? We'll just wait to see what happens with the Tourism Committee, and if something goes sideways, I can bring it back here. Okay. Item twenty-one is a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
All right. Take it away. More quality of life. We continue discussing about the library basement renovations, just still some fine print that need to get worked out there before we sit down and talk about true funding and the return on investment for both sides. We had a nice presentation from Ethan Hollenberger at the county. He's been touring around and visiting other libraries, discussing about the possibility of doing joint libraries and the benefits of that. I won't go into specifics, because there is no specifics yet. He is just starting that process of researching that to see if that is something that would benefit the county as a whole and the individual libraries. And then we touched on a little bit, which we'll expand upon at the next meeting when we get into the budget. I know Jay had met with the library director numerous times to kind of get to a final number. The library board did end up approving their library budget, about 20,000 over the levy that they were granted. That main expense is for an increase in materials. The logic is, is that if we increase materials, then we thereby can increase circulation, and that's how libraries primarily get their funding. At least it's tied to that circulation. So we can continue that conversation when we have the budget in front of us, but I just want to give everybody a heads up.
Thanks, Chris. Questions for Chris? Justice?
How is, and this is just a curiosity thing, and it kind of relates to what you're talking about. How is library usership looking these days? Do you have numbers that quantify that?
Not right in front of me.
I mean, is it up? Is it down?
We get statistics, and, I mean, it could vary from month to month. I would say overall programming has been great. We've seen, we've done hall, I'm sorry, room rentals have started maybe six years ago, so that's been a good way to get increased revenues there. And so traffic-wise is great. When you look at actual circulation, slowly trickling down, and that could be because people are just checking out less material books, right, and more eBooks, but that kind of materials are getting tracked by the state as, instead of, as opposed to physical materials. So there's a lot of variables in there. We do see, I mean, we know what the lists are for the amount of books that are kind of sitting on a waitlist that people want to check out. So you could argue, well, if you can get more of those kinds of materials, you're going to increase that circulation.
Reduce that waitlist, yeah, great.
But that's only a handful of books, not 5% of the materials budget.
So you rent digital, too?
Say again?
You rent digital, too?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. And that, those numbers aren't being taken into consideration by the state?
Not by the state, but we do track this. Yep, that's part of a larger, larger valuation. That's out of our hands, so.
Got you, got you. Jay, along those same lines, it might be good for Amy to be prepared with some of those numbers, and if they're asking for a increase over other departmental budgets, like to see what the ROI is and the usership and that sort of thing.
Absolutely.
It's a good question. Anybody else? What else can we talk about? Being no further business before the common council, I adjourn.